Good evening, everybody. Welcome. To the September nineteenth meeting of the ZBA in Concord. Tonight, we have a full board is here, so let's do roll call. Elizabeth Dwyer-Lennett.
Here.
Thomas Swaim.
Here.
Ravi Fia.
Here.
And I'm the Chair, Theo Kinnaman, and I'm obviously here as well. We are also being joined by town staff. Being Elizabeth used, but she'll be joining a little bit later. Christine Zale, Kim Johnson, and the Building Inspector Paul Creedon. So we are all here. I don't know. Yep, that's, I think we're all here, so we have a big group, we have some new some new applicants tonight, and let me just quickly, we have six items on your agenda tonight, six scheduled items, and then a few administrative business items that we will handle at the end of this at the end of this meeting. This meeting, when an item gets opened, just you all know, we will have an applicant or an applicant representative explain the application. Board will ask questions at that point, and after that, and when the board is done with asking questions, we'll open it up for public comment, public question. When when the, we have heard all the public comments, we'll close that portion of the meeting and bring it back to the to the board for discussion deliberation, continuation, or decision, so we'll take it from there. And now I also see that when the Rovelli, our select board liaison has joined, so that those would be all the people from from the towns and the towns end that are here tonight. With that all being said, let's start off with our first item of the night, seven o'clock, Russell DeGamber for a special permit on zoning by law, sections six to seven and eleven six to construct two-story addition which requires a waiver to the fifteen-foot height limit within the required fifteen-foot setback at seventy-nine Elsinore Street. Anybody here to speak for the applicant?
Yes, my name is Preston, I am the contractor.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, we were, this is actually our second time here, we were here a few months ago. We got a sixteen-by-thirty-foot garage addition approved, but we were only a couple inches over, I think maybe two or three inches over the line. When we're doing the plans, we originally, the plot plan was wrong, so we thought we had the two feet, that's what we're going for, so so regardless, after we got that approved, we're kind of looking at it again, and the two feet would help out his layout a lot, so I talked to Paul and he said we could go for it, and we decided to come back and try to go to get, so we'd actually be, the roof line would be twelve-point-three feet away from the side setback now, if we borrow two feet from the right side, so. So we wanted to construct an eighteen-by-thirty garage instead of the sixteen-by-thirty garage, that was previously approved.
Do we have, do you have a visual, Kim or the applicant, can we pull up a plan, sort of, you know, talking about? Please? Anybody? So what, what was the original, what was originally approved on the dimensions?
Sixteen by thirty.
If you want, give me a minute, I can bring it up.
Okay, thanks, thank you. Yeah, but how far were you from the property line in the original approval?
We were basically over it by about three inches, I think.
And, and now you wanna have two more, have you talked to your neighbor?
Well, the neighbor has actually a new house that's going up. That we, I believe is building it. But I think he has talked to him, I think, and he has, sees no problem with it, and no one is, there hasn't been any, any complaints or, or letters or anything.
Correct, there's nothing on file on our end.
Yeah.
Tom, Ravi, a little bit, any questions from you?
I don't have any.
No, I'd like to see the visuals up.
Yeah.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, I came in late, and this is for eleven Elsinore?
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-nine Elsinore.
Seven, oh, seventy-nine. Oh, seventy-nine, so you want to see the proposed site plan?
Please, yeah, I think that will be good. Okay, thank you, thanks Elizabeth. So it's that proposed addition that you have here, is bumped out an additional two feet, right?
Yes, exactly.
So, and I know that, you know, typically in Ravi, you will always point to that, this is is no reasonable alternative available for this, right? So what would be the logic behind this?
Yeah, I guess more specifically to why does that master bed have to go on top of the garage instead of on top of the first floor addition on the other side?
Well, that's only one, the other side's a one-story sunroom.
Right, and then, and then, and then the question is, why would you have the master bedroom? I mean, they don't, I mean, it's, it's nice that they're lined up on, on the walls, right? But the master bedroom could be two feet smaller.
Yeah, but for the design purposes, doesn't, we, we talked about that, because then we wanted not to come to here.
Right.
And I kind of drew a quick drawing for him, and he didn't like it at all, he just, you know, I just didn't look right, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, but just, just sort of, sort of, that you know, right? In order for us to come to a decision here and to grant you this permit, you, you need to convince us that there is no reasonable alternative available, if you will, right?
Right.
You know, and, and, and that really is, is what, you know, we're looking for, that, that argument is that is what you need to make to us, why you can't, why that can't happen.
Well, it's again, the, the visual aspect from the, did not like the visual aspect from the street, and it helps with the layout up top, it allows, it actually allows us to get I mean, just allows a lot more things, allows a laundry room upstairs, and this, again, with the whole layout in general, did not like the look, we've gone through, we've been designing this for over a year now, gone through different things, so that's kind of where we came to, you know?
Can I ask, or the, your question? Can I ask where the stairs are on the inside of the house?
So if you, if you go, keep on, whoever has the plan up, if you scroll up to the top, there's a floor plan, basically when you walk in the front door, they're right off to the left in the existing house.
Okay.
So it's not in the new area, the, what, the garage is being did, and then the, the stairs go up to the top, second, the second floor, and there's a window there now, and that's basically gonna become a doorway into the new master suite. So yeah, so if you go down, one more, another one, a couple more, I think, she's got them all in here. So that's, this is the existing one.
Okay.
Door going up here, and see that window, right, seventeen, the first seventeen one, that's pretty much where the door can go, so if you go down one more, or show the proposed.
Okay.
Right there. Sorry, two more down. There you go, that's, I'm sorry, sixteen's a door, there, and then that's where
Okay, got it.
Yeah. So it allowed, before, we didn't have much room in the closet and the master bath, you know, there was just, it was very tight, so we thought we were going for the max before, which was the two feet, we thought we were coming within twelve feet from the lot line, but again, the plot plan was wrong. Unbeknownst to us, once we got the plot plan done, which was literally maybe the morning of the ZBA meeting, so we couldn't really switch everything around at that point, you know, and go for the eighteen. So we would have gone for this originally if we had known we were, where we were, if the plot plan wasn't done wrong the first time. So, which I think the client was going over, going off of an old plot plan. So again, I, I kind of came, and he was designing it with this architect, Carrie, this architectural designer, and then I kind of, I wasn't really involved with that beginning part, so I probably would have caught it, but you know.
Got it.
Too late now, so.
Thank you.
The project got delayed a lot, apparently.
Theo, may I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Yeah. I, I may be showing my ignorance, but am I correct that this application is asking permit, permission to move two feet into the side yard setback? Two additional, okay, so as I read two-point-seven, six-point-two-point-seven in the first paragraph, it says you may do so not to exceed three feet if the width of the other side is correspondingly increased. And how is that happening? I don't understand here, what's being correspondingly increased?
I'm not too sure either.
Well, they have more of a setback than they need on the other side of the house, right?
Exactly.
Right.
So they're borrowing from that side setback.
Right, we have
Bottom, right, and then
We have twenty-six or whatever, so.
Okay, okay.
Borrowing two from there, which we had talked to Paul, and he said that's something he was pretty confident we could do, so.
So the issue, Tom, is that they're over fifteen feet in that, in that borrowed.
Okay, okay, I'm with you.
Yeah.
But let's, let's open it up for public comment here, anybody from the public want to comment, ask a question? Anybody, anybody going once, going twice? We'll close the public comment section of this, this hearing, bring it back to the board. Board members, what do you fancy, what's your, what's your thoughts here? I, yeah, face value, it looks it, it looks approvable, I mean, the argument of no reasonable alternative is is not the strongest ones I've, I've heard, but, yeah.
But I mean, you have to put the garage there, right, like, there's not another
Definitely no other place for garage.
So then it's like, you know, if you're putting the garage there, it does make sense, both of the stair location inside the house, just for design purposes and having the garage there, I mean, it makes sense to use that space for the master. Yeah, the only alternative I could think of was putting it over the sunroom, but then you don't have the same amount of space, and you're like, why force a bigger bump out on that side than you need, and so that's not reasonable, I think I can get there.
Yeah, yeah, no, and, and you could, you could offset the walls, of course, right, the, the garage and then, but then it gets, framing-wise, structurally, it gets pretty uncomplicated.
That would be, structurally, it'd be a little more difficult, definitely, it'd be a lot more, they have a big carrying beam in there.
Given the fact also that there's no no neighbors voicing any concerns, and that indeed the setback on the other side is, is really substantial. You know, I can, I can, I can get there.
I had one more follow-up question.
Yeah, yeah.
Is it true that you, you haven't heard anything from the other abutters? You had mentioned on the one side they're building, but on the other side, were there any thoughts or anybody behind?
We haven't had, either, either, each meeting, no one has
Okay.
Said anything, so.
Great, I just wanted to verify that, thank you.
Yeah. And I'm just looking at the, at the website, there's nothing on, on the website, on the documents, so. So Elizabeth, Ravi, what do we fancy here?
Yeah, I mean, I'm ready to make a motion.
Go, go ahead.
I move that we approve the application of Russell Gamber for a special permit under zoning by law section sixty-seven, eleven-six to construct a two-story addition to cause a waiver to the fifteen-foot height limit within the required fifteen-foot setback at seventy-nine Elsinore Street, with standard conditions, and, you know, based on our findings, that there is no detriment to the neighborhood, and the there's not a reasonable alternative.
I second.
All in favor, Ms. Sophia?
Aye.
Ms. Dwyer-Lennett?
Aye.
And Chair Votai as well, congratulations, and good luck with construction.
Thank you very much.
Moving right along, second item of the night, Pat and Peter Nelson for a special permit on the zoning by law section seven-one-five and eleven-six to construct a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot addition that increases the non-conforming side yard setback from thirteen-point-nine to eight feet at fifty-two Cottage Lane. Anybody here to speak for the applicant?
I am, I am Pat Nelson, and with me, our builder, Corey Peck, to answer any other questions.
Great, Elizabeth, if I may ask again, to have a plot plan up, I think that would be good.
So I have a plot plan in a, in a PowerPoint.
Oh, excellent, excellent.
So if you, if I can do that, I would like to share the PowerPoint, if I can be made possible to share my screen.
I'm sure somebody can do that.
Go, go ahead, Pat. Okay, let me see if I can get this to. Okay, so can you see my screen?
Not yet.
No, okay. All right. Okay, all right, you don't need to see my grandson.
Sure, you're proud of him, so that's not
Very proud of him, very proud of him, yeah. Okay.
There we go.
Beautiful, beautiful.
You see it now, great, right, so we are here tonight to ask to construct this addition and to increase the non-conforming side yard setback. And I just want to give you a context for the neighborhood. This, and I don't know, can I, well, I don't know if you all can, I don't know if there's a pointer here that I can use.
Not sure there is, but.
But well, so we are, geez. Pat, it's just your, your, your normal mouse arrow. So we can see your normal mouse arrow. Oh, you can see it, okay, great, terrific, so this is Main Street. This is Cottage Lane. Cottage Lane turns to the left over to Belknap Street, and it turns to the right to a dead end at the end of Cottage Lane. We're on Main Street, and this is Main Street in Concord Center, and Thero, we're just, we're the last stop before Thero Street, as you're coming from West Concord. This is our house. All of our abutters are, except for our abutters to the right, as we're looking at this, are on Main Street. So we abut the backyards of three-thirty-nine Main Street, three-thirty-three Main Street, and three-twenty-five Main Street. And then we have our neighbors, the Dayton's, who are to our right. This is a neighborhood that's already pretty non-conforming lots, our lot is a non, pre-existing non-conformance. This is the, this is the original plot plan, how, the way our house is set up. So here is our, is our house, here is Cottage Lane, we have a shed in the back. And what we propose to do is put an addition at the, at the rear, to the left of our property. This is an addition which is going to be what I call a garden room. It's a room that would allow us to maximize any solar gain that we can get, a room that would allow lots of windows and lots of connection with our gardens in the backyard. Which is one of the reasons why we are asking to place this in this particular spot, rather than in, right behind the house. The other reason is that if we were to place it right behind the house, we would not, we would lose the windows that look into the backyard from our kitchen, making it a very dark room. So those are, those are our two reasons for that. This is just a picture of Cottage, sorry for the jumpiness of my computer, of Cottage Lane, this is our house. This is the Dayton's, and you can see we're already very close. We have beautiful screening from the river birches that they've planted, but our houses are all very close. This is a front view of our house. Our house looks across the street to the train tracks, so this is Cottage Lane here. This is a parking area for commuters, and then there are train tracks plus some gardening that my neighbor and I have done to beautify the neighborhood. This is our proposed street view of the house, so if you're standing at the street, this is what you'd be looking at, this would be the addition on the, on the left side. Right now, our neighbors to, to the, to the left at three-thirty-nine Main Street, if they were standing in their garage and looking over their fence, this is what they see in our backyard. This was not a particularly tidy day when I took the picture, but this is, this is what they would see. When they look from their garage after we do the addition, so this is looking from their garage, this is what they would see, this would be the side of our house, this is the existing part of our house, an entrance into access to this garden room. Three-thirty-three Main Street, if they stood on their garage and looked back, this is what they would be seeing, and this is the addition. This is our existing home, and this is the addition. And then from fifty Cottage Lane from the Dayton's, when they, if they look, when they look out their windows from their house, because this is the only, theirs is the only house that would be impacted a view of the new addition, this is what they would be seeing, so this is our existing house, and this would be the addition. And that is it. That's a context for it, that's why we've chosen to do it this way. And I, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I believe you have in your packet a, an email from probably maybe January or February, when we started talking to our neighbors about this, from our neighbors at three-thirty-nine Main Street, that they have no objection, and I, we have our neighbor at fifty Cottage Lane here, Tammy Dayton is also here tonight to speak about her concerns or no concerns about the, about the project.
Terrific, thank you very much, that was a very thoughtful and thorough presentation, that was very, very helpful, at least from my, from my perspective, and I must say, I, I know, I know Cottage Lane because the Dayton's house we approved gave a special permit to, I want to say, six, seven years ago, I believe.
Yeah.
So I, I remember, I, I was there for that, so I remember that well. Members of the board, any questions? From Ravi, Elizabeth?
I don't have any questions, it's a really thorough presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I, I think Theo and I were on the board for an application a few years ago in this neighborhood, and certainly the neighbors are very involved, and if there was any objection, I would fully expect them to show up in force, so I'm just here if there's any public comment here.
Yeah, yeah. So with that said, let's, let's open it up for public comment, anybody want to speak on this application?
I'm Tammy Dayton, I, we own the house now that I suspect the neighborhood was very vocal about and showing up about. But Pat and Pete are wonderful neighbors, I think that this would be a great addition to the neighborhood. She is an avid gardener, and I think the rationale for where it's placed, if you spend any time in her backyard, makes perfect sense to me, and so we have no objection, we're in full support.
Thank you, thank you, and I'm just, just, just the need, on, on that note, indeed, as, as was mentioned before, indeed, there's, there's an email on to us from the Greenos, the, the the neighbor that has the garage right on the property line, so is there anybody else who would like to speak on this application? Seeing none. Was there anybody? No, seeing none, then I'll close that, that part of the, the, the hearing, and bring it back to the board for discussion deliberation motions, so I, I just, it, it, not only, I think, just, just to tee it up for, for the members here, not only I do, I think that, that the presentation was very thoughtful, I think the plan was very thoughtful as well, where it's placed, you know, the neighbor has, you know, the neighbor that would be the most impacted on that side of the, the property is obviously fully in favor of this, but also has their garage there, you know, which, which is almost a buffer to, to, to their spot, so, and I can see the, the rationale for placing it where it's, this addition where it's placed, given, given the sun exposure and taking advantage of a, of a backyard, so that's, that's where I stand, and, you know, Ravi, Tom, Elizabeth, please feel free to to comment.
I think it looks great, I think it is also really thoughtfully done, and it's nice to be thinking about aging in place, and you know, you've done it without building something that's any bigger than it looks like it needs to be, so I, I have no problems with it.
Yeah, yeah, I think
No, I, I have no comments.
You know, I think, you know, sometimes we rely on the fact that it's, you know, you're not going further into the setback than you were before, here we are, but I think there's so many other factors that we discussed that showed it into the neighborhood, and I, I do like the project as well, so I'm happy to make a motion that we approve the application of Pat and Peter Nelson for a special permit under zoning by law section seven-one-five and eleven-six to construct a two-hundred-and-eighty-three-square-foot addition that increases the non-conforming side yard setback from thirteen-point-nine feet to eight feet at fifty-two Cottage Lane.
I second.
And all is in favor, Ms. Fia?
Aye.
Ms. Elizabeth Dwyer-Lennett?
Aye.
And Chair Votai as well, congratulations, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Nice project.
Thank you, we're excited.
Good.
Well, seven-ten, Lori Shavitz, and my apologies for if I misannounced that, for a special permit on the section, zoning by law section seven-one-five and eleven-six to construct a one-thousand-five-hundred-and-twenty-five-square-foot addition on a one-thousand-four-hundred-and-seventy-square-foot non-conforming single-family dwelling that increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at forty-two Riverside. Have anybody here to speak on behalf of this application?
Hello, I'm Lori Shavitz, and with me is my general contractor, Bill Foster, and we're happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Is there any presentation, do we want to, want to explain what the project is?
Sure, so the project consists of two parts, the first is, and actually, it might be easier to show you as I'm talking, the existing photos, so if I may share my screen, let's start with. Hopefully you can see a picture of my house.
Mm-hmm.
Forty-two Riverside, great. So. There are two steps to the process, to this project. The first is to add a two, a two-car garage attached to the house. And as you can see, there is a big empty spot where I'm proposing for the garage to go. Here is context with respect to. The backyard. And with respect, excuse me, to. My next door neighbor at thirty-two Riverside, who would be most impacted by the addition of the garage. As you can see, there's a fence between us and here is their garage. So. When we add space here, it should not impact their. Living space, one way, shape or form. And their driveway is in front of their garage, leading to Riverside Avenue. The second. Piece of the addition would be bumping out the first floor. Of the back of my house to increase the living and dining space. It's a, the house I bought is a colonial from the mid nineteen-sixties. So storage and, and function and flow is kind of at a premium. And I just, I love to cook and bake and entertain my family and I'm just looking for some more space to be able to, to do that. The other piece with respect to the garage, and this is why. The addition, the additional spaces so much is that I'm looking to put a primary suite above the garage. So of the fifteen hundred plus square footage, I am adding, two-thirds of that is devoted to the garage. We're not impacting the setbacks on either side. Or either any of the sides of my property. And again, we're happy to answer, Bill and I are happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Let me, let me unmute myself. Board members, any questions?
You, you said two-thirds is the garage. Does that include the primary on top or?
It does, it does, yes. So it's going to be a two-car garage, hopefully. So the garage itself will be five hundred sixty-four square feet. And the, the floor above it. Will be. Five hundred and four square feet. Of, of the bed, the bedroom. Bathroom closet.
Have you, any input from neighbors?
Everybody seems supportive. To my knowledge, I haven't received, there have been no objections.
Yeah, and there's nothing on, on file. You know, given, given the other homes on this street, I mean, I don't think this, this home will be, this house will be out of, out of scale. So that's, that would be also one, one items looking at the. Looking at the street view here. So. Any, any other questions from board members? Let's open it up for public comment. Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this petition? Give it a second or two here. Anybody, anybody? Seeing none, I'll close the public comments section here. Members of the board, what, what you fancy? Let me, let me, let me actually then start this up. And I, I just said, looking at a street view. This house will be, you know, will sort of, you know. It's the same scale proportionally as, as, as many other homes on the street. So. And that, that's the lot, Elizabeth, so it's, it's a smallish lot. My issue here is, and you know, you know that I'm gonna sound like a broken racket here. Is that we are increasing the impervious area here quite substantially. And given where we're going with, with stormwater and groundwater, I, I. Would assume that I actually would. Would request that if we approve this. That there's gonna be some sort of an infiltration system and, and Elizabeth, feel free to chime in.
I just wanted, my. I highlighted the wrong parcel. So I just wanted, it was forty-two, not, not thirty-nine.
Okay.
Just so everybody can see the contextual neighborhood.
Yeah, yeah. And here, actually, you can almost see neither at forty-two that the, the. The block of the house is a lot smaller, sort of the, than, than the homes on either side. So, you know, it's scale-wise, I, you know, it, it, the additional, the addition, I think will fit in the neighborhood. But, you know, when we go through the. Three items that we need to look at, it's, it's the, one of them is town, town utilities. And I think stormwater is, is an important part of that. So we need to see that we can, the increase in impervious area. We, we, you know, I think this, this homeowner will need to. Alleviate that by some stormwater management.
Can I comment? Excuse me, may I comment?
Well, we, we closed, we closed the public comment section, but.
I'm the contractor.
Yeah, excellent, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yep, my name is, my name is Bill Foster. Currently, the, and it, and it's a valid concern with the stormwater concern, but the, right now, currently, what we'd be doing is we'd be removing the. The impervious pavement as well as behind this building is, is, is all pavers. So we'd be removing that as well. To put the addition in the place where the pavers are and put the garage in place of where the hot top is.
Yeah, and, and, and since the hot top was recently placed, you know, I, I, you know, as you can see in the photograph, you know, no. That hot top is, is brand new and, and I think, you know, no stormwater management was put in place for that additional hot top. So. You know, I think, I think we, we do well, we do the community a favor if we. Would come up with some sort of a, a galley system or anything else that would mitigate the stormwater impact. Elizabeth. Yes, I was waiting for the comment that you're gonna make now.
So previously, the board has. Addressed this issue by having the property owner incorporate just roof runoff recharge. As, as the stormwater mitigation.
Yeah, yeah. And, 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 and that would be great. That would be great. And, and I don't think I wanna, you know, if we, if this were to be approved, and I think that, that's what we might do tonight. I, I, I don't, I would like to condition it as such. And not have an applicant come back with a full stormwater management report. So. That's, 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 that's where I am at this, at this point. So. Any of the other board members want to chime in?
I mean, I agree, it's, you know, I think the, the increase is over the fifty percent, probably just because we're starting from such a small number. You know, I think overall it's thoughtful and modest. Increases, if you're gonna put a two-car garage, I don't think there's. I, I think it's a good use of space and. You know, I'm supportive of it.
So. Elizabeth, if you are of the same mind, then it's your turn.
Yes. I, I'll, I'll make a motion. I move to grant for Lori. Shavitz, a special permit under zoning by law section seven point one point five and eleven point six. To construct a fifteen hundred twenty-five point five square foot addition. On a one thousand four hundred and seventy square foot non-conforming single family dwelling. That increases the gross floor area by more than fifty percent at forty-two Riverside Ave.
Second.
All is a favor, Ms. Dwyane Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Fia.
Aye.
And Chair for tie as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
And good luck.
Thank you.
Seven fifteen, Town of Concord Public Works being the applicant on behalf of Leo Balsam, being the owner. For a variance on the zoning by law section six point one and eleven, seven to the front yard setback requirement. To allow the installation of a new sewage pump station. New sewage pump station emergency generator at ninety-six Pilgrim Road. Any. Yeah, anybody here to speak for the application? Go ahead, Ms. Morowski.
This is Jeff Morowski. I'm the Water and Sewer Superintendent for Concord. With me tonight is Public Works Water and Sewer Engineer Giovanni Casares. Giovanni will take the lead through most of the presentation. But this is critical infrastructure for the town. This particular pump station services over three hundred homes in this area. It's a vulnerability to extreme weather events, ice storms, power losses. The pump station was built prior to the ninety-six. Pilgrim Road. Building, the initial easement predated the subdivision even, I think, of this parcel. And then the easement that we included in the packet. Was that at or about the time of the home being built and. It had actually expanded the easement at that time. I'm not sure what process may have happened back at that time. In the eighties. Mid to late eighties is when the station was built. So we're looking for a variant setback to install a side-by-side standby generator. So Giovanni, I've got a number of resources available if you want me to bring them up.
Yes, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to share my screen as well. Good evening, members of the zoning board. My name, like Jeff said, is Giovanni Casares and I'm the Water and Sewer Engineer for the Town of Concord. May I share my screen? Okay. So, let me bring up. So this is the. Location for the existing. Lift station that we have at ninety-six Pilgrim. We, this is a recent picture that I took. You can't see the station, the existing station. It's behind those bushes, behind this fence. This is the roadway, the right of way of Pilgrim. We're hoping to clear some of these. Existing bushes that were planted by. Public Works by the Water and Sewer Division, by the way, when the estate, the station. The station came first and then when they developed the house, we arranged. We coordinated with the homeowner, which was previous homeowner, not Mr. Leo Balsam. But we planted those, as you can see. There's really nothing that you can tell from the street. I got a second shot. This is the front of the house. You only see the picket fence pretty much from the front of the house. And the station is behind. So what, what we're proposing is to remove some of these shrubs that are here. And locate the. Emergency generator right where I got my cursor, right where I'm running my cursor. The reason for the variance request is because. This station, as Jeff said, came after, or came first, and then they developed the, the area or the, the, the house behind. So we don't meet the setbacks, the front setbacks. We are, we, we do meet the size setbacks, but not the front ones. So we established a conversation with Mr. Leo Balsam. And we told him our plans of bringing a, a emergency generator. And this, he's very supportive. We have his full support. Obviously, this is a crucial station for our operation for the Water and Sewer Division. As Jeff mentioned. If we were, if we were to lose power, grid power here. Our response time needs to be within twenty to thirty minutes. Otherwise, we risk, we, we, we run the risk of starting backing up in, into the homes. It's not a, a good situation. We like to. Be on the safe side and, and install a. Emergency generator. The issue that we have with this location is there's no natural gas anywhere near around this area. So. We opted to get a generator that is powered by diesel. By nature, diesel generators are a little quieter than natural gas. In partic, in this one, in this case particular, it's roughly about sixty-five DBs for the noise. Which I, is, is not, is not a very high noise. It will be out of sight. And like I said, we have the full support of. Mr. Balsam and. We also reach out to neighbors and everybody was pretty supportive because they know that. With the recent weather patterns that we've been having, we expect a strong winter. The, the, the summer keeps bringing very heavy downpours and, and storms. So our resources are usually very tight in other locations. So. This station is one of the ones that worry us the, the most. So we respectfully request from the zoning board to grant us the. The variance.
Thank you, thank you. I, I, before, before I ask you any questions. I would like to ask a question. To Paul Creedon. Paging Paul Creedon.
Yeah, you do, yeah.
Yeah. Paul, why is this a variance? What makes this a variance?
Oh, because it's, it's in the front yard setback.
But what is in the front yard setback?
The generator.
But why does that need a variance?
Because it's, it's classed as a structure. We class it as a structure.
You would class it as a structure and therefore like, I just, so this is a question that I've had. Many times, not just for you. I've had a building inspector tell me that I couldn't have a light pole in a front setback because it was a structure, right? So I just, I just don't know where that boundary is and, 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 but you classify this. As a structure. Why do you classify this as a structure?
I suppose it would be no, no different than a shed, you know, it's, 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 it's a, a cube.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm not, I, I just, you know, I, this has always been, as I just said with the example, it's been confusing to me for years. What is a structure and what isn't a structure?
Yeah, it, it, it would be the same thing if it was, if it was in the rear setback, we require generators to be out of the setback in, in, in rear, rear, rear inside as well. That's the way it's, it's been treated all along, Thea, I believe.
Okay, okay, fair enough, fair enough. That's, but that was, that was just. Sort of my question, you know, what makes this a variance request?
If, if I just may. Clarify the height of the generator, including. In this case, this generator, since it's gonna be powered by diesel, it has what is called a belly tank. So at the, at the bottom of, of the generator, there's the storage for the diesel. So the height of the generator, including the, the diesel tank, it is. Sixty-nine inches from the, from the finish. Level, finish ground. So it's sixty-nine inches. Is, it will, it will be well covered by shrubs that we will, we will plant.
Thank, thank you for that because that was gonna be my next question. I, there is no proposed site plan, right? In, in the packet, because I would like to see what are the dimensions of the, the property line? You know, so at front as well as side. what are the dimensions of the, the property line, you know, so at front as well aside. Um, and, and, and I would, I need also would like to see what would happen with the vegetation, uh, there and where, uh, where this uh, emergency generator would be placed because, you know, there is, there is some nice bushy shrubs here and that do a nice piece of hiding it, but there is, you know, I was, I was out there yesterday, there is, you know, manhole cover, the pump station cover, and then there is a small electrical switch box. Um, so that's all very easily hidden. Um. But, you know, all of a sudden, this thing is six foot, uh, high, you know, it sits on a concrete pad, you know. When you're constructing this, pretty much, I think all the vegetation, you, you're going to be taking out just to get this constructed. Um, like to know what happens to the big pine that's right behind it. Um, you know, so I, I think, you know, I, I, and I'm, maybe my, my fellow board members might, might be able to convince me here, but, you know, I think we need a little bit more thinking here.
So if I may share my screen once again, I have a, um, everybody can see my screen, so, um, this is a plot of survey from the existing, um, easement that we have. Um, this area, shaded area is where the existing generator sits, uh, uh, the existing, uh, pump station sits. The generator will, we're, we're confident because we brought at the, um, the supplier for the generator and we size it with, uh, we, we, we plant, we, we planted flags when we sized the, the exact si, uh, size of the, of the generator. And the tree will sit, the tree sits where I got my cursor right now, so it's behind it. Um, I'm, I'm a green person. I consider trees very important in our planet. So I was very, um, very careful to measure when I, when we did and we feel confident that the tree will not be in any way, um, it put in danger at all. The shrubs in the front, they will, our hope is to try to remove them and even try to reuse them. If they are too mature and they might not take the, the moving or the relocation, we're ready to plant new ones. But yes, the, the tree in the back will be definitely, this tree, uh, in the back will definitely be um, out of, uh, not, not touch at all. It will, it's right where I have the, the beginning or the, the tip of the, the, the arrow where the generator will be right in this area.
Thanks, and I just not want to be in, in a discussion here, but, um, I can share, uh, I'm gonna uh, cancel your, and, and I would see whether, okay, show my screen, see my screen? So this is, this is, this is, you know, so here is the little flags, right, where you're gonna put your, uh, your generator, right?
No, um, let me just clarify that, sorry. So when we, when I called the supplier for the, I was doing the procurement for the generator and we called the supplier, these flags, um, are for the size of the generator, however, we couldn't put the flags where the shrubs are. So this is just to show the size of it for, for, for us, for me. And then our idea is once we remove this shrub that I am running my cursor through, then this will slide over and then this shrub will come to this location where the flags are. They were located there, sorry, just because we couldn't put our flags in the middle of the shrub, of the shrub, uh, or, or the vegetation.
Okay, thank you. Um. So while I'm on a, on a crashing spree here, let me continue, um. How often, uh, over the last few years, have you been out here with the emergency generator?
Um, on and off, uh, Jeff, you want to answer that one or?
I'd have to check with, um, Scott Chalmers on that. It, it's, it's the next generator that we prioritize based on the, um, amount of time it takes to fill the wet well from the three hundred plus contributing homes, uh, so I are on a vulnerability list and is why we prioritize this particular site.
Yeah, but a, approximately, how often do you get out here with, with an emergency generator?
If, if we have to take an educated guess, I, I will say that with the recent storms that we've been having, um, losing grid power, um, in this area could beat one to three times in a, in a year, uh, in summer. Um, the problem is nor'easter, as everybody knows, um, they're unpredictable. So they could be in the middle, you know, we can receive three of them, three outages in the same year. Um, historically, I think it, when I started looking at, into this, it was, it was at least a couple of times during the, during the year that we lost power. And like I said, our operation crew had to rush out there within twenty to thirty minutes not to risk backing up into people's homes, not to mention the risk that they run when they're running a portable generator and there's lightning above them or there's storm. So this is why we're doing it, not only for the safety of the homes, but also for the safety of our operation crew.
Good, thanks. And, and this, uh, this emergency generator, um, how often do you, uh, do you exercise it?
The generator will be set up to exercise, um, weekly for about fifteen minutes. Um, we have asked that question from Leo, from the homeowner Leo Balsam. Um, it's also possible to exercise it biweekly. Um, I own a generator in my own house and it's gas, natural gas. Um, it sits probably very close to my, my home and I, I, I'm not able to, to hear when it's, when I, the windows are closed. But it, it, it could be weekly or biweekly depending on our, our setup. The, I think the recommended by the manufacturer is weekly.
Okay. And you discussed this with the homeowner?
He, he, we did. Um, we had, um, at least three meetings in front of his house. I explained to him about the flags as well because I think he was asking the same thing. Is this where it's gonna be? No, um, it's gonna be moving to where the shrubs are. So he was very supportive and he said, I understand what, completely what you guys are doing and we, he actually appreciate the fact that we're looking into installing an emergency generator.
But thank you. Um. Any of my, uh, fellow board members have additional questions? Elizabeth?
Yep, I have a few. Um, it sounds like you've gone through a really thoughtful process and that's great. And I really like that you're also thinking about the operations crew and their safety. I think that's really important. Um.
Thank you.
With the, the actual generator itself, so it'll be five feet, nine inches tall and about how wide?
Um, the dimensions are the length, the longest dimension, which is, um, it runs on, in, in the same direction as a street in this case. It will be seventy seven inches.
Okay.
And the width is thirty four point seven.
Okay.
And the height, as I mentioned, is sixty nine point three.
Okay, great, thank you.
That, that includes the, um, that includes the belly tank.
Yeah, and so when you mentioned that belly tank, um, is that, but that's not below ground level, that's at ground level?
Correct. Um, so at ground level, there will be some cleaning of the soil or cleaning of the, the existing, uh, surrounding or where, where the generator is gonna be. Usually I request, you know, my generators to be, to have a stone base of three to four inches. Um, and then the, it will be the base and then the tank on top of that, um, and then the generator. So you can imagine all of that will be sixty nine inches plus the base. I think we are going, we're loo, we're looking at a four inch base.
Okay, good. And then, um, so the tank is within the same metal shell as the rest of the generator?
Is within the same footing of the generator, correct.
So it's not got any other exposure, it isn't more vulnerable?
No, no, it's, it, they have, they, when they, um, designed this, this tanks, they make sure that they stay within the, the footprint of the generator.
Great. And then is it refueled regularly or how does the diesel, uh, it's like, refilled every month or something?
Yeah, so I asked that and it's a number of hours, um, but the, the tank that we're getting, it will give us a number of like thirty, uh, thirty running hours, which we're thinking, oh, so we might have, we might just run it, uh, you know, uh, uh, whenever it runs every week, we might just fill it every two months, depending on, you know, how much is, it, it, it will not be filled every week, that's for sure. Not even every month, I'm not expecting that.
Good. And how do, how does the exhaust part of it work?
So it's all built in the, the generator. It has an exhaust on the side. So that area will be facing, um, away from the, the, the bushes, from the shrubs. Um, it, it needs to, to exhaust that way. So we're thinking that it will exhaust to the side of the existing station.
Okay, so toward the abutter?
No, towards the, so it's, the generator will sit kind of sideways or on the side of the existing station. So it will, it will exhaust to the side of the, not to the front of the Mr. Leo Balsam, but to the side. So he will, he will not feel, in other words, any heat from this generator.
Okay, and odor or anything like that, that neighbors would encounter? Have you run into that in previous generators in Concord?
Um. No, I, I don't, I, I don't have any experience with, uh, any complaints. Um. I, this is
A good sign.
Yeah, this is my, I will say, second generator with the Town of Concord. Previous to this, I installed about six generators with the Department of Correction where I was for ten years. Um, and I, I, I install them next to offices, next to where people sit, you know, during the day, uh, working. I never got any complaint because there are certain setbacks from, from the house. In this case, we are, well, I will say from his front door, we are about sixteen feet a, away from it and his house sits a little higher than the station and the generator. So it's covered by a, uh, stone wall that it's right behind our station.
Okay, um, and then one other set of questions. Will the homeowner, so I see that there's that sort of picket fence in front and then the shrubbery. Will, will there, will that fence remain? Will there be something else? Will the homeowner be involved?
So our idea, yeah, let me share my screen just once again. So our idea is per the homeowner's request, he said, will the generator show? And we said, well, no, um, we, our hope is to put shrubs around it, right? And remove these or maybe reuse these and put shrubs around it. He said, can I have another segment of the fence? And we said, sure, no problem. So we'll, we'll, the same way that this looks, it will be right here, another another segment will, will add.
Okay, so he's feeling like he can keep the character of his home and you guys have good communication on that and this isn't, you know, something that, um, it sounds like he's on board in all ways, aesthetically included.
Yes, our, our, my goal is always to work with the resident, the homeowner. Um, I'm a homeowner myself. I don't want anything coming in front of my house that I don't like. In this particular case, I noticed that the white picket fence kind of matches front. Right? So it, it almost looks like it was stood out and is part of it. I'm glad that, you know, he is understanding and he is supportive, but yeah, we intend to put another segment of fence here and then the bushes will be behind.
Great, good. That's all the questions I have. Thank you.
Excellent, because I wanna, you know, and I don't want to be, you know, micromanaging this, but if you're adding a, a piece of, a piece of fence, may I ask that you, uh, check with the homeowner to add another piece of fence, not just, you know, piece of fence where you already are proposing it, but then, uh, another piece of fence that goes alongside the, the property line so that we have a, a ninety degree there, if you will.
That's a good idea.
So you're saying, you're saying to include one here and then make a, go this way, make a nella. That fence in the back is the fence of, um, this property.
Yeah.
And that is the, that, you know, as I'm running my cursor, that is the property. I, we could ask him that. He requested this front piece. He did not request the other side, but I, we can bring it up to him and
Right, right. But, but I, I would request that and if he, if he's agreeable to that, um, obviously if he doesn't like it, then, then, you know, then that, that's fine with me. I am gonna just, uh, because you mentioned it, uh, as well, uh, I'm gonna kick you out and have, uh, my screen here. So this is, this is, uh, this again here is what you can see here, what, uh, was just mentioned, Elizabeth. There is this, there is a little bit of stone wall that that could, could run this, so which, which actually I think really helps because it sets, it sets the top of the generator below the
That's great.
Below the window of the homeowner.
Great.
Uh, so he, uh, they will look over it, uh, and I think, I think that that help, helps a lot. And, and I think, and I think that will also potentially help with some noise, et cetera. So
Yeah.
That, that I think is
Well, knowing how many children are in that neighborhood too and that they play kind of yard to yard, that additional kind of barrier or, you know, it just, it, I think that's a good thing.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, if Robbie and Tom don't have any questions, I will
I've got some comments.
Oh, excellent, excellent, Tom.
Well, maybe not. I, I, I find this a hard case, interestingly enough, because I think the presentation, uh, has been terrific. I think the need for the, uh, object really is unquestionable, we need it. However, uh, this may be one of the, for me at least, one of those cases where the zoning bylaw doesn't really accommodate the, uh, issue at hand. And I, so I say to those of you who are the voting members tonight, if you look at eleven point seven, you, I think, would have to find that there's something about the soil conditions, the shape or topography of the land or structures and espe, especially affecting such land or structures before you could grant the variance. Now, you may say, well, we don't really have much of those, however, a few words later, it says, "A literal enforcement of the provisions of this bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise." I don't think it's, personally, I wouldn't say it's a financial problem. It may be quote, "or otherwise." But I find this one a difficult one to grant a variance, given the language that I personally don't believe there qualifies under soil conditions, shape or topography of land or structures and especially affecting, but not generally affecting the rest of the neighborhood. So I just think as a pure legal ease, that's, we, we, you're challenged and so in order to grant it, because I think it's a worthwhile thing and we probably need it. But I think you'd have to come to grips with, is this one of those that is a, uh, substantial hardship, quote, "or otherwise"? So that's where I raise the issue for you.
Okay.
I, I think we get to subs, to "or otherwise" in the, um, public safety with the sewer backup and then especially with the danger to the workers for installing, you know, a, a generator in perhaps a lightning storm. And I'm not sure how my fellow board members feel about that.
But, oh, I, I can, I can get to the "or otherwise" very easily, just as you said, uh.
Yeah, for, for me also, Tom, I was thinking about that, those words and you know, my, my thought there was, if we look at shape, I mean, to me, I don't think we're talking about the shape of a lot so much as the shape of the easement here maybe, um. And, you know, the, the fact that basically the entire easement is probably within the setback and it's a very small easement to me is sort of a unique shape that's specific to this particular property interest. Uh, so I, you know, I, I sort of, I, I think there may even be a path there, um. But I, you know, I agree, it's, it's, uh, uh, you know, you gotta kind of shoehorn into it here because it's, it is sort of, sort of the unique presentation.
Okay, I like the shape of the easement because we wouldn't want to take, you know, or, or lead to them taking a bigger easement.
So, right, right. Elizabeth, you, you just had your hand up and then you went away. Did we answer or?
Um, no, I was gonna follow up with, um, Elizabeth's comment on the, the, "or otherwise", I think the board can easily get there. Um, the, you know, the hardship is, um, it's not just for the town and the workers, um, there's Um, it's not just for the town and the workers, um, there's a definite financial hardship. With sewage backing up into people's basements, there's also a very significant public health. Um, and safety issue with, um, that, uh, happening. Um, to Tom's point, though, um, understanding, um, the, the, this. The Board of Appeals in the Town of Concord has, um, not granted very many variances specifically for exactly what Tom is talking about. Um, I do think, um, with some, um, careful crafting, um, you know. Uh, Robbie's idea, you know, the, the shape of the easement, um. So you have, you know, size, shape, topography, um, you know, this is, this is not, you know. This is not a hilly area, this is, you know, very flat, um, there, you know, there is not, as far as. Stormwater, I mean, as far as drainage, you know, all of these homes are connected to sewer. Um, all of the sewer flows to this one, you know, this one area, um, you know, if there is no power. Um, it, it all flows to this area, and that's why, you know, you're, you're looking at situations where. You know, things fill up and somebody is rushing out there, as, um, the superintendent stated. Um, you know, within, you know, twenty, twenty-five minutes, so I think, um, you know, that is. Has to do with, um, you know, the, the area, um, the, and, and maybe it's not soil. They're not on private onsite sewage disposal systems, they're on, you know, public sewer. So I, I think, I think the board can get there, um. And it's just thinking about those findings and the very specific characteristics of, you know, even this lot. This is the lot in the neighborhood where, you know, this, you know, easement is located and, you know, it, it's. It's not the same as every lot in the neighborhood, so I think there are very. Um, specific characteristics of this property and the location of the easement in the front yard, in the setback. Um, which. Make having this structure located in there for the other reasons, um, you know. Public health and safety, the financial cost of sewage backing up into people's basements and their homes. Um, that it can be crafted carefully.
Elizabeth, you don't need to go to law school, you're doing fine.
Yeah, you convince me.
Uh, Theo, do one question, you suggested that the fence, it'd be, uh. Uh, go up the left side of that building, maybe make a ninety degree angle. Is, uh, are the water folks hap- okay with that? Because won't that make it a little more difficult to get into the, uh, the equipment?
That was my concern, is that, as that was being described, it could be an impediment to access or even to the fueling process.
Hmm.
Uh, we, we've taken a lot of steps to help conceal, uh, the existing infrastructure, but if, if it's. Prohibitive of our access, we'd be concerned about that, so we'll, we'll look at that and work with the homeowner and. Um, obviously, the fence can't be there until the generator goes in, so the generator goes in first, and then we'll. Work to make this, uh, as favorable as at all possible.
I appreciate that.
Maybe, maybe that section isn't a, a solid fence, but same picket fence, but it's a gate.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, it's, it, you know, one, one could step over that fence or walk around it, but, you know, I, I, I appreciate if that, that. Piece of fence would be installed, but if, you know, in practicality, out on site when it's, when it's built. And as you said, it's gonna be the last thing that's gonna be installed anyways, uh, then, then, you know, you, that can be revisited. Let's, uh, let's open it up for public comment here, um, board has talked long enough, um. Let's open it up for some public comment, if there is any, anybody here to speak on this, anybody, anybody. Seeing nobody, uh, we'll close the public comment section, the fact that the homeowner isn't here tonight. And I think it's a, uh, I'll take that as a sign that he, uh, he's okay with all of this, um. Any further discussion, uh, at the board, how do we wanna approach this, do we, uh? Do you wanna take a vote on this tonight? Do we wanna see a draft decision first to make sure that. Uh, we have our wording correct, um, I think we're all a little bit on the same page here, that we like the project. But the legalist part of it might, you know, might need some work. Um, as I said, I can, I can, I can get there very easily, or the, uh, at the, or otherwise. Uh, that, that I think, yeah, is very easy for me, um, I think Robbie's comment about having an easement, you know, yes.
Hmm.
I think the, the bylaw references the parcel of land. But I think, in this case, the parcel of land is the easement. And if, if we would have had a little bit of a better site plan. Uh, proposed site plan where, where everything would, would sit, we would have had a, I think, maybe an easier time. Uh, getting, getting to that point that, that, you know, the. The, the generator.
Given the, uh, response that.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, given the response of, uh, well, all three of you, plus, uh, the detail of Elizabeth. I don't think you need to wait, uh, I, I think the decision that will come forth will incorporate. Many, if not all, of the comments of the board, but those of Elizabeth on behalf of the board, so from my perspective, I don't. I, 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 I don't see any value in, uh, delaying this, as I'm sure the town would like to get this done as quick as, as possible.
Yeah, thank you, Tom, I appreciate that comment, uh, because I, 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 I need. The legal part, you guys are so much more ahead of me than, so I, I appreciate those comments, Elizabeth.
Um, uh, so I, um, I agree, um, but if one, one member would like to. Um, just review the draft before it gets signed and filed, um, that's something that you can also do.
Yeah, I know, I know. And Tom, would you be willing to do that?
Yes.
Good.
That, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Will Elizabeth be happy to do it? Will Elizabeth be okay if I do that?
Definitely. Any, anytime Attorney Swaim, anytime.
Yeah, get out of here, yes, I'd be happy to.
All right, thank you, thank you. So, that all being said. Robbie, Elizabeth?
Are we, we're making a motion?
I, I, I think so, I think we're, you know, we talked about a decision here, um, that being, is being written up, so. I mean, we, we, we can discuss further.
I, I don't need to discuss further, I could make a motion, um, but should it reference the decision? Or is, can I, can I do that before it's drafted?
Yes, so, um, it'd be no different than, um, you know, making a motion, um, based on the deliberations and the findings. Um, discussed, um, this evening.
Good, okay, um, in that case, I would like to make, to make a motion to grant the Town of Concord Public Works. On behalf of Leo Balsam, a variance, um, I can't see part of my screen, there we go. For variance under zoning bylaws, section six point one and eleven point seven to the front yard setback requirement. To allow the installation of a new sewage pump station, emergency generator at ninety-six Pilgrim Road, parcel. Zero four eight nine dash one.
A second.
Well, in favor, uh, Elizabeth Dwyer-Lennett.
Aye.
Robbie Fia.
Aye.
And Chair votes aye as well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Uh, on the approval.
Good.
Um, being that we just passed seven twenty. Uh, we have Off Cherry Street Realty LLC, the applicant and the owner for assigned variance under sign by law sections three C two. And eight B to allow a third principal sign at seventy-nine, seven nine four Elm Street. Um, anybody here to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Hi, yes, this is Nicole Sullivan, I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicant.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Not too bad, thank you, let's, uh, hear your presentation, if you have one.
Sure, so let me get my screen here, which I'm, I think you guys probably should already have this, but let me.
I was, I was actually looking for a, uh, for a site plan, uh. That I didn't see we had on file in our packet, but. I'm hoping you're gonna show it to us.
All right, let's see, you can see here, everybody can see?
Yeah.
Perfect, so we are asking for a variance for a third sign, right here on this wall. Um, the, and I've attached a photo here of the previous building, they had three signs, so we are just actually asking. To have what they had, um, the third sign that we're proposing is significantly smaller in size, the. Sign that was up there was about twenty-eight square feet, what we are asking for is seventeen square feet. And our sign is not internally illuminated, it's gonna be illuminated by a gooseneck. So we are, it's, it's, you know, fits aesthetically with our building, and let's see, I've got, I show all my sign locations here. And this cup here is the one that we are asking for the variance for.
Good.
Yeah, let's see, that's just a close up of the artwork.
Great, thank you, um, members of board, any questions, similar to what we approved, I think, last, uh. Last meeting for the neighbor. Not similar application, so, anybody have any questions?
I guess. If I'm reading the sign by law, it says you can't have more than two principal signs, and then, but then it said if. If, uh, you have secondary frontage on a parking area, a secondary sign may be affixed to the second side of the building. So. If, if I'm counting the two principal signs as, as the freestanding and the one on the front, is there a reason this one isn't just a secondary sign?
We were told we had to file for a variance, so that was, that was what we did.
Yeah, Theo, it, it, only two signs are allowed, principal sign and a secondary sign, that's the way the bylaw reads.
The, the secondary sign counts towards the two.
Yes.
Paul, Paul, you're very hard to hear.
Can you hear me?
Very, very faintly.
Uh.
Am I the only one?
Yeah, I, I can hear him, Theo.
I can hear him quite well.
Yeah.
I hear him.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, only, I, I, as I said, the only two principal signs are allowed. Did you hear me?
Yes, Paul, yeah, yeah, so I, I guess we're saying a secondary sign counts as one of those two.
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I, I, I was having a little bit of deja vu with this, um, and I think, you know, we. We sort of, uh, agreed on the last one that there's some unique circumstances here with the, being on Route two. Um. That allow us to kind of find what we need to for the, uh, for the sign variance. Which is, you know, cases that appear not to have been contemplated by the bylaw. Um.
I agree with that, um, the other downtown areas are not like on a major highway like this, so that's what I was thinking too.
So, you know, I, I was fine with this, um, I guess, uh, if there's any public. Input, I'm, I'm happy to hear that, but. Oh, Theo, you're on mute, I think.
Can't hear you, Theo.
Yeah.
Maybe this is, maybe this is better.
That is better, yeah.
Can hear you.
It's my earplugs, um, so the last, the last application, we decided that Elm Street here. Uh, pretty much functions as a, uh, as a frontage road, uh, which is a pretty unique situation, and therefore, you know, you almost. Would think that, that this, this, uh, parcel is located on, uh, on Route two. If you didn't know any better and drive by there, you would think it had a Route two address.
Hmm.
As well, so I think that's, that's that unique situation that is not con- con- contemplated by the bylaw, that we can get there, but. Um. Let's open it up for public comment, because we need to do that, and see whether there is anybody who wants to speak on this petition. Seeing nobody, hearing nobody, I will close the public comment section and bring it back to the board. Um, and I think we already discussed this a little bit and gave, gave the reasoning why we could, could approve this.
Yeah, and just, you know, to add a little bit, right, you, you see the big sign from. Uh, the big road, you get into the parking lot, you know, this is a big enough building that if you're on one side of it and you can't see what's on the front. It, it's reasonable to think, you don't realize the Dunkin's on that side too, right, like, so I, I, I think there is a purpose. And the utility to having that secondary sign on the, on the side, um, so.
I agree.
I'm happy to make a motion. There, we approve the application of Off Cherry Street Realty LLC for a sign variance under. Signed by law sections three C two and B to allow a third principal sign at seven nine four Elm Street, uh, based on the. Uh, findings discussed tonight.
Thank you guys very much.
We still have to vote.
Right, Elizabeth?
A second.
Your second, right, uh, open the favor, Ms. Fia.
Aye.
Uh, Ms. Dwyer-Lennett.
Aye.
Chair votes aye as well, now it's approved, congratulations, Nicole.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Thank you. Um, and now, last but not least, Middlesex School for Special Permit and Site Plan Review on a zoning bylaw sections six. To eleven, eleven six and eleven eight for a new athletics practice facility with a height waiver. To seventy-two foot nine inches at fourteen hundred Lower Road, who is here to speak?
Uh, Theo, could, could you note for the record that, uh, Mr. Swaim is reclusive, reclusive?
I will note for the record that you are, uh, recusing yourself, but don't go away, because we.
I'm not going.
After this, this is the last, uh, item on the agenda, the last official item on the agenda, we have some administrative business.
No, that's fine, no, I'm not going anywhere.
To handle, so we would like to have you back, so you can't go to a football game just yet.
I don't have, I don't have streaming, so, I'm here.
So, good, good, um, applicants, who's on deck?
Kurt, do you wanna kick us off?
Sure, thank you, uh, thank you everyone for, um, um, hearing us out today, we appreciate you guys taking time. Let us present, uh, our presentation and the, uh, uh, conditions that were approved by the planning board. On Tuesday night, uh, my name's Kurt LaCroix, I'm the project, uh, Director of Projects and Safety here on campus. And the main point of contact on behalf of, uh, Middlesex School for this, for the new fieldhouse. Uh, on, on phone, I believe we have Ronnie Ash, who is the, uh, Lead Architect. Uh, I believe we have Brian Sutherland, who's a, uh, uh, Owner's Rep. And then, uh, Steve Ventreska, who is our Lead Civil Engineer, representing us. Good one, thanks.
Great, thanks Kurt. So I will share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Perfect.
Just real quick, Ronnie, I, uh, Ronnie, I just, uh, I just realized, we are, joining tonight too is, uh. Tom Greenlaw, Tom is our in-residence COO, so he's, he's listening in as well.
Right, thanks Kurt. Okay, good evening, everyone, and to the board, thank you for having us again tonight, so I will. We will be starting with the addressing some of the points that were raised at our last meeting, and these are really centered. Based on the comments that we heard, they kind of fall within three buckets, one is how does a building. Help with the emission of the school, the second one is why was the gable roof preferred over other options? And then three, how does the building fit within the campus aesthetic? Just as a reminder, the, I will run through the project description, and then I'll hand it over to Kurt to talk about the mission, but the building is seventy. Just as a reminder, the, I will run through the project description, and then I'll hand it over to Kurt to talk about the mission, but the building is seventy-two thousand. Square feet of assignable space and about twenty-five thousand square feet of parking on the lower level. Um, it is a practice facility for the, which is expanding the existing athletic program, the program. Centers around three courts, one of those being turf, and part of this presentation, which we'll get into, which we didn't have last time, is the floor plans, just to give you guys an idea. Of how the program is distributed throughout the building. It is located on the north entrance of the campus, adjacent to the existing athletic facilities, and. As a whole, the building is committed to sustainability and will be a lead silver project. And then Kurt, I will throw it over to you to run through the mission.
Sure, thank you, um, so, just to recap from, from, uh, the previous EVA discussion, again, you know. Really highlighting what, what Middlesex real is about and, and that being focused on the co- co-curricular. So since the beginning, uh, um, Robert Windsor, when, when founded the school. Had the, uh, the mission, which was really just down to, to a simple phrase, find, find the promise in every student, so it, it transcended just not to. Academics, but to athletics, uh, so there hence the co-curricular. Regiment that is, that it's been employed here for over a hundred years, a hundred and twenty plus years now, so, um. Really, the points that I wanna hone in on here is that, as we mentioned, there really has been no update to the athletic facility since two thousand and two, with the hockey rink. Uh, rebuilt, um, you know, s- some minor, you know, interior stuff, but nothing, nothing of significance. Uh, really what this building represents is just the, um. Providing enough adequate space for all teams to train, uh, and providing a facility that is sort of, um. Enhancing the student experience, um, so we have multitude of teams at a high compete level varsity, what's then considered a second or JV's team. And then a thirds, which is really allowing the kids that, that aren't here primarily a- and focused on, on academics, I mean. Athletics, but more be part of the community and be involved, so what, what's really happened is, this is, um. This is gonna help alleviate some of the crunch time we have with our limited facilities and practice spaces. So that students are actually able to actually finish up, even the thirds teams are finish up at, at a reasonable time. And be able to get back to the dining hall and, and have, have dinner, and then be able to get back to the dorms at a reasonable time to finish their studies before. Or go into bed, so, um, this will also give us the opportunity to with no, no track facility on campus, which. Um, you know, the irony is, is that, that we, Middlesex has done quite well in the ISL and track competitions and have been champion. Have ha- multiple, multiple championships in track and field over the years without actually having a physical track on campus, so. This will give us that opportunity to have that elevated track that, that they can continue to practice.
Thank you. Great, thanks Kurt. Um, this slide pretty much reiterates what Kurt said, so I will move on to the next one, so as mentioned, the. Selected site is adjacent to the existing athletic facilities on the north side of campus. And part of the questions that we heard last time was, were there any other alternatives explored and wh- how we selected this site? One of the main reasons is the campus, especially along the east and south edges, is surrounded by wetlands, and. This site adjacent to the existing athletic facility is, was an existing gravel lot. We are away from, are far enough away from the wetlands and any buffer zones. A piece of our entry coming off of Pratt Lane just clips the hundred foot buffer, but that's an existing entry which we are reusing. Um, the existing parking lot is impervious, we are adding a lot of improvements to the stormwater system in this side of campus. Um, to the, adjacent to the existing housing that is here. There is the direct connection to the ORG gym, of course, which is an important part of how we selected this site. Um, the idea or the, the building height itself, how we ended up with two stories above the parking level. Uh, the south fields, even though they look expansive, there are, there's very limited space as far as between the baseball, the football, the soccer. Those fields are pretty crammed, crammed in there, so there wasn't a lot of opportunity to, to either move the building south or to have kind of an expansive. Single-story building on the site. To the north of our site, there is dense forest, so. If you remember, I did have the photo views from last time, um, that's key to note that there is a lot of buffer from the adjacent. Um, coming, from, coming from the north on Lowell Road. Um, and then really preserving the historic center of campus, there was no opportunity to really bury this building deeper into campus, because. Based on the design, this was an Olmstead Design Campus, that, that center circle and that really, the organization of the campus. Really, we didn't want to, there was real no opportunity to, to locate this building, you know, anywhere really in, in that center of campus. Again, these are the views of what the building looks like, this is a view from the south fields, the existing ORG gym is off to the right. Looking towards, from Pratt Lane, as you enter in the parking lot, this is the new day student entry. The interior of the building, just as I mentioned, is really centered around this three-court area where one of those is a turf practice area. You can also see the elevated track in this view. And then the site plan. So on the lower level. As we mentioned, it is, there is parking, also on the lower level, there is the visiting locker rooms as well as some of the support spaces, which are kind of buried as a partial level down. The main level. As previously mentioned, also has the three courts, there is the fitness room, which is really an all-school fitness room, this isn't just something that's reserved for the. Elite athletes, that the purpose of this really was for, um, to contribute to that co-curricular, um, athletic component. And then, again, the, the elevated track. It's not a full. You know, track that you would see on outdoor, this really is a practice track, so it does have the one full turn for practice, it has a high jump area. Um, and then does have the straightaway for practice. Um, the purpose that we're here, this slide does show all the elevations, and then it has the, the height, the seventy-two foot nine that we are requesting. Relief on. And one thing to note on this top elevation is just the scale of the building as it compares to the existing. The existing adjacent hockey, or sorry, the existing adjacent athletic facility. One of the key things that we wanted to touch on for this presentation, and it was a question that was brought up last time, was how does the building fit within the campus? And how were some of the design decisions made? This, these collection of photos were, are roughly early nineteen hundreds, and it really shows that the campus aesthetic was established early on as. As they were designing, the Olmstead Brothers, in addition to the architects, were designing this neo-Georgian style architecture. Some of the key components of that is the sloped roof, whether it's a hipped roof or a simple gable. And fast forwarding to today, a lot of the buildings and projects that we have worked on on campus, they really fit within that, they really fit within that. Aesthetic. Um, on the upper le- on the upper right, this was the renovated theater, which was completed a few years ago, on the lower right was the brand new. Landry House dormitory. Warehouse on the left, one of the dormitories on the right, or also on the left, really just showing that the. Fieldhouse that we have designed is really, um, keeping within the aesthetics, and this is how we ended up at. Um, for one, the sloped roof, and you'll see in a minute that we did incorporate some flat roofs to try to. Really tone down the scale, especially on the south fields. But this is just giving you, you an idea of that aesthetic across. The majority of the buildings on campus. These sections we added to show you kind of where we have the slope roof versus where we do have. Flat roof, so it was something that we'd considered, and we did end up with a hybrid scheme. On the top section to the right is the south fields, it is much lower, because as I mentioned, the parking is partially buried, so it's roughly forty-two feet. High on that south field level. On the other side towards Pratt Lane on the north, it is a three-story building, because the parking is, um, at the existing parking level. And that's where we do have the gable roof to give us enough height above the basketball courts, as well as above the elevated track. The section on the bottom, and this key plan on the low right, kind of. Cuts through, so you can kind of see and plan where they, where we're cutting, so the section B shows the existing athletic facility on the right. The new fieldhouse on the left, and how we align the level zero, which is where the parking is. It aligns with the level zero of the existing gym, so we do have accessible connection between the two facilities. This also highlights that the existing ORG gym to the peak of the roof is roughly fifty-four and a half feet. Um, just highlighting that, uh, our building isn't much taller than that, obviously it is taller than that, but. There isn't a large difference between the existing facility and our, our building. One thing we added with the photos, so the last time you saw the photos where it was kind of wintertime, there's no leaves on the trees, we added similar views showing the. Summertime reading where along Lowell Road, the vegetation really, really provides a wall of green. Um, between Lowell Road and the campus, we've dashed in the fieldhouse, just so you see the, the outline of where you would see it. Just like you do on this, on the wintertime views, so this is approaching from the north. And then directly across the street, again, during the summertime, there is a lot of concealment with the trees, obviously during wintertime, there's, there's. Little, but there is, um. A little bit of a buffer with the vegetation that exists, and then from the south is the same thing, much less visible, because it. The tree line is relatively thick as you, as you go down south along Lowell Road, along the fields. And again, these, the solar studies which we did, and if you have questions on these, I can expand on what these shows, but really. What we're showing is those trees along Lowell Road are already casting a pretty large shadow. West of this site. Our building is contributing to that shadow, but it isn't adding more than those trees are already contributing. Exterior lighting, all of our exterior lights are dark sky compliant. The interior lights that would potentially be visible from adjacent properties are either on time clots or occupancy sensors, so they. After hours, and even during hours, they would be, um, turned off or dimmed. Okay, and I went through that probably faster than I thought. Are there any comments or questions?
Uh, thanks Ronnie, that, uh, that was very, uh. Some very helpful slides here, um. You know, I have a couple of, uh, a couple of questions answered, uh, you know, I. Especially that first bullet point there, I think was mine from last, and I, I'm fine with that, um. Members of the board, do you have any questions or comments?
I appreciated hearing about the, um, that the athletics are a requirement, and so this is within the ac- the. You know, the core mission of the school and part of, uh, you know, an inherent part of the education that was helpful, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was very helpful to me as well, so. Ravi?
Yeah, great presentation, I think it did, uh, you were thoughtful about the questions you asked last time, and I, I think they did get answered, so.
Yeah, I think that that slide showing the, uh, showing the wetlands and the, the resource areas, uh, I think was very helpful. Um, and, 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 you know, with the, the layout of the campus, the Olmstead part of the camp, so I think that was good. So, that, those were our questions, and I will open it up to, uh, the public. Anybody in the public wanting to speak? Seeing none, hearing none, I will close the public comment section. And bring it back to the board for further deliberation, contemplation, decision, motions. What have you, take your pick, I, I, I do wanna, actually, before we go there, um. I do wanna, indeed, as always, commend, uh, our town planner. On the terrific, uh, planning department report that, uh, that was written, that I think had everything in it. So. Um, where do we wanna, where do we wanna go, what does the board fancy?
Does, does anyone have remaining concerns about the roof, the nature of it, or the height of it, mine are satisfied, but I think that'd be the only. Other thing to talk about.
Uh, no, I don't, I don't have any remaining concerns, I think.
Yeah, no, I, I, I don't have either, I, I think that there was, I mean, the, the presentation was very good, I think, you know, the. Uh, as you said, you know, we have parking below the building, which, you know, something we, we like, right, in general, and that pushes the building up. By eleven feet, right, we have a, an accessible connection between two buildings that sets the finished floor level of this building. The roof is made sort of hybrid, you know, uh, uh, flat, and then, and then a slope. Um, it matches all the, the, the roof angles, et cetera, matching, matches the, uh. The roofs that, that is seen on the campus, so I think all of these things, I think. Makes me feel very comfortable that the height of this building, as it is presented, needs to be the height of this building.
Yeah, I think it is what needs to be the height for the, for the purposes the building is being used for, you know, and I think there's actually. A, a really good use of space inside to, to cover all the bases that they're covering within, uh, within that footprint, so. I'm good with it.
Yeah.
So.
Um, I would make a motion.
Excellent.
Great, I moved to grant Middlesex School a special permit. And, uh, site review under the zoning bylaw section six point two point eleven, eleven point six and eleven point eight. For a new athletics practice facility with a height waiver to seventy-nine feet nine inches at fourteen hundred Lowell Road.
Um, can I just add? Uh, no, the, that was fine, if, um, I can make the suggestion, sug- suggested edit that. Um, based on the, um, agreeing with the findings in the planning board's recommendation letter, and the. Um, I wrote down the few additional comments, uh, that you just made the last two mi- um, two minutes about the finding for the height waiver. And I can add those into a decision.
Right, so moved.
And, and the conditions, right, in the, uh.
Yes, the recommendation, the planning board's recommendation letter and the conditions of approval. Correct, thank you.
Saying we have, the, hang on, the applicant wants us, doesn't want applicant's representative, doesn't want us to vote.
No, I do, hi, Steve Ventreska with Niche Engineering, I just wanted to clarify that the, um, that mistwired the elevation seventy-two feet. Nine inches, I thi- I thought I heard seventy-nine feet, two inches, maybe I was mishearing, I just wanted to make sure it was. Appropriately, uh, voted on.
I intended to read what says seventy, uh, seventy-two feet nine inches, and it's entirely possible I misspoke, so. I would like it to be the seventy-two feet nine inches.
Thank you.
Cool, um, and you seconded Ravi, right?
Yep.
So, all in favor, Ms. Dwyane Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Sophia?
Aye.
And Chair Voice Eye as well, congratulations, it looks like a great building, and it, uh, hopefully it moves the, uh. Okay, Middlesex School program forward, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very, thank you very much, everyone, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Sorry, uh, may I ask a question, uh, Mr. Chair, about the, um, appeal period, I, my understanding, and Elizabeth, you can correct me, um. The decision goes to the town clerk, and that starts the twenty-day appeal period, is that, is that correct?
All right, the decision will not be filed, uh, till, um, Monday. Um, and then that starts the twenty-day appeal period, um, but during that twenty-day appeal period, there's quite a few conditions. For you to address, you can begin addressing those immediately, um, and you can also, um, file for your building permit. Um, and start that review during that twenty-day appeal period, um, it, it will not be issued until all of those conditions. Start to get satisfied, but we can, you know, we can start working on that, um, immediately.
Perfect, thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, good, thank you. Good luck.
Take care, thanks guys.
Uh, mm-hmm, Thomas, you can, uh, come back now, we have some administrative items, uh. To deal with, one said, one noted, was a Concord Housing Development Corporation proposed road name for the four oh sex, four oh six. Old Marlboro Road, PRD, Elizabeth, do you have anything to, uh?
Um, no, just the, the, the Concord Housing Development Corporation actually, um, did, um, a. you know, I'm not gonna say contest, but took in, um, different suggested names for that roadway for the development. Um, and there was a hundred percent agreement. I don't, I don't know. I do, I believe Tom Swain probably met Terry Rothamell. Um, Terry Rothamell was probably, I'm gonna say the godfather of affordable housing in Concord. Um, he actually started the Concord Housing Foundation. And, uh, so there was a hu- a hundred percent consensus and support for naming the road Rockhamelle Place. Um, the fire department has no issues with that, um, and neither does the historical commission. Um, so administratively, um, we're just asking the board to, um, to, I guess, um, vote to agree to have the roadway named Rockhamelle Place.
Great.
Thank you. Thank you. I would, I, I didn't wanna get involved in any naming discussions for obvious reasons. But, uh, if it's, if it's like this, then, uh, does anybody wanna make a motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion that we name the, uh,
Accept the name Rockhamelle Place for the Assabet Homes PRD.
That we accept the name Ra- Rocket, sorry, Rocket.
Rockhamelle.
Rockhamelle.
Yeah, R O T H.
Rock. Rockhamelle.
No.
No.
It's, uh,
Say so moved.
I had to write it out. Rockhamelle Place, um, so move, like, I don't know.
Okay, I second.
Uh, all is in favor, Ms. Uh, Dwyane Leonard?
Aye.
Ms. Sophia?
Aye.
Chair Voice Aye as well. So that's approved. Concord Middle School to give an update on the lighting. I see somebody from Sims Mani is here. Jennifer Susie, would you like to? Yes, there you are. Oh, there's somebody else.
Yes, so we are here tonight, um, because we were, um, in front of you. I think it was almost two years ago now, um, presenting the Concord Middle School project. And the intent at the time, um, when we presented, um, the project to you was the, the, the Concord Middle School project was going to be sort of concurrent with the CML, the, the towns project to install photo takes on the site, which included PV panels on the roof, but also, um, PV canopy structures on, in the parking lots. So our, um, our site lighting and site cameras were proposed to be installed on those canopy structures. So, um, some new information, um, coordinating with CMLP is that project uh, is not going to be concurrent with the school project. Um, and so we're, currently our schedule is, um, will be moving in to the new school in February of next year. And without those canopy structures there, uh, there's some safety issues without having appropriate site lighting and site cameras. So we are proposing a temporary solution, um, installing some temporary poles with temporary lights and, um, poles to provide, uh, you know, to, to have the cameras installed on um, in the interim until those permanent PV structures are installed. Um, and that's what was approved by the board, the, the photo, the photometrics plan, the site lighting plan was all, um, approved based on those PV canopy structures. So we had, um, we had presented to Elizabeth and to Mr. Creedon a, a temporary solution with, um, adding eight additional light poles uh, on the site. And we do have Anthony Jimenez here. He's our electrical engineer. If there's any technical questions related to the photometrics. But we submitted a revised photometrics plan, um, and a revised plan based on that. So if anyone has any questions, happy to, to answer.
Yeah, uh, question, how long is temporary?
Um, that I don't know. Um, CMLP's project is obviously a separate project from ours. So I think that would be a question to the town, um, as to the timing of that. We've been coordinating very well with them, but obviously we're not in control of that project.
Well, we're not talking years here. To the best of your knowledge.
To, to the best of my knowledge, I hope not, but I, I don't, I don't know. I can't answer to that question.
Okay, okay. Um, members, any other questions? Any questions? Getting late, people are getting quiet.
So, um, administratively, Paul, and, um, I just wanted the board to, you know, be aware of this. Um, and then again, just, you know, have the board, um, I don't, you know, move to accept the, you know, the changes to the, the lighting of the parking lot um, and the security lighting, um, due to the, um, I'm gonna say the, um, what's the right word? Uh, CMLP's, um, you know, the timeframe in which CMLP needs to move forward with the um, canopies is, um, after the school needs to be open, um, and, you know, lit and secure.
Good. I, I, I don't, I don't have a problem with it. If you and Paul, um, have reviewed it and are okay with it. And given that it's a temporary, uh, situation and we are pretty confident that eventually those panels will be installed. Uh, and right, that's, that's what town meeting voted for, so, um, I'm fine with it. So I would like, uh, I would like a motion.
Sure.
Uh, well, a motion to, uh, to approve the temporary, uh, lighting plan, uh, as presented.
I move to accept the temporary lighting plan as presented.
I second.
Uh, all in favor? Ms. Wyland, I, um, Ravi?
Aye.
And Chair Voice Aye as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you, we appreciate that.
Yeah, and we kept you waiting for a long time, so, but you got the outcome you wanted, so.
Thank you very much.
Excellent, excellent. So I, I do still have two, uh, administrative items, so there's no, uh, no football for you all yet. Two items, um, quick ones. Um, yesterday we got a, an email that was forwarded by, uh, Elizabeth about, uh, in-person meetings, Zoom meetings. And I know we have kicked that one around a little bit and just talked about it. And I actually would like to put it on the agenda for, uh, the next meeting. Uh, so that, you know, we think, we think about it and have maybe a little bit more. I don't want a necessary robust discussion, but having a, a, a discussion about what, what we wanna do because, you know. Well, I don't wanna say anything. Uh, we, we do wanna, indeed, you know, address it. I mean, we talked about it. Now a member of the public mentions it. Um, so I, I, I think we need, we need, we need to talk about this, uh, Elizabeth.
Um, and just so the board knows, I will get input, um, two items raised in, uh, the email regarding open meeting law and ADA compliance. So I am getting the appropriate people, um, you know, staff people to provide, you know, factual information to the board.
Right, I, I, I think that will be, that will be great. And I think, uh, the, the state also, the Commonwealth also has some, uh, some information. And, and I think, you know, but, you know, separate from that letter, you know, that letter is, 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 uh, I don't wanna say the, the reason, but it's like, you know, it brings it to the forefront again, something that's, that's been around. And that we, we, I think we just need to address that.
Great.
So, um, we'll, we'll do that next, uh, next, uh, next meeting. Um, talk about next meetings. Um, Forest Ridge, uh, we need to schedule some meetings. And my apologies here, uh, that, you know, I, I'm gonna be away for a good two weeks in the middle of November. So I'm gonna be missing the November meeting. That, that made this whole scheduling with Forest Ridge a little bit more complicated. I'm missing the November meeting, so that's a heads up for you, Ravi. Uh, because you're gonna have to run that meeting in November, November fourteenth, I believe it is. Um, so I won't be there and it is for Tom and Elizabeth, just, you know, if, if, you, you, you gotta be there, otherwise. Otherwise there is no quorum. So, uh, please, please keep that in mind. Um, Elizabeth, one are they gonna, one is Forest Ridge gonna be submitting?
Um, so, um, they're saying they're gonna be submitting that, you know, the first week of October. Um, so what I'd, um, like to throw out the possibility is, you know, I, I sent out different, different polls and things kept changing, so I appreciate it, you know, people replying back. But, um, you know, possibly now, um, it, it did look like everybody was available the twenty fifth, Monday, the twenty fifth of November.
No, I, I never was. I'm sorry if I missed something out. I was available on the fifth, but I'm not on the twenty fifth.
You can't meet on the fifth, there's something happening in town, or there's something happening in the nation.
That's a busy day. Sorry, I'm busy that day too. I forgot.
My, my fingernails won't be there. No, but so, uh,
So what I was, you know, thinking, the, the applicant could come and just give a presentation on the revised plans. Let's say like the twenty eighth or the thirtieth of October. Um, you, you, you probably wouldn't have outside consultants, you know, review and town staff review, you know, comments going back and forth, yeah, you know, by then, but they could at least come give an initial presentation and then continue it from, you know, from there. Um, you know, I guess, uh, we're looking maybe, um, uh, December fifth?
Yeah, I, I, so Elizabeth, this is, this is just, you know, I, I like this setup because this is just as we, you know, because in my mind, this is a completely new project, right? And so this is just like the initial meeting we had in, uh, in the townhouse, where we just, where we just took in information, let people comment, gave some comments back, and then we sent everybody on the merry way and got the consultants going, et cetera, et cetera. So I, I see this, this October meeting, uh, sort of the same way, you know, I'd like to have, you know, they're never gonna be, you know. They're saying that they're, they're sort of filing, uh, first week of October. You know, that, yeah, no consultants, that might not happen, you know, that might be the second week. You know, that, that will give us a week, maybe two weeks for us, at least to digest a little bit what comes in. And then, so having, having a meeting towards the end of October, I think will be great. And then we'll kick, and then the consultants have the whole week, the whole month of November, although that's a chopped up month. But I had the whole month of November to do their stuff and then they'll come back early, uh, early December and, and get right to it. I think, I think that's, that's great. And that, that way also the community gets a little bit, you know, they get involved because I don't want, you know, the first meeting where the consultants have sort of really chewed on it and, and start getting stuff back and then the community hasn't seen anything and doesn't know where it's at. So I think, I think, I think that's, that's good that, that there was an, an initial meeting, an initial presentation.
So, um, twenty eighth or the thirtieth of October?
Would this be a, this be a hybrid meeting? Cause I don't think I can be in person on Monday or Wednesdays.
Um, so you, so sorry, say that again, the twenty eighth or the?
Or the twenty eighth or the thirtieth?
Yeah, the thirty, the thirty, yeah, thirty first is not good. Um, I, I, I can do both, but it, it, it will be hybrid. And I think, given the, the, given what kind of a meeting it is, the presentation. Ravi, I think it would be fine if, if you are, uh, remote. But I, I, you know, it, I, you know, I think you should be there, but remote is, uh, is very fine.
Great.
So which would you prefer?
I, I hate Monday night meetings.
Okay, Wednesday, the thirtieth, thirtieth.
It just, just messes up the whole week, but that's just, you know.
Okay. Um, and then does December fifth, Thursday, December fifth work?
Uh, yeah, um, and, and this, so if, if the applicants aren't make it on the, on the thirtieth and then, you know, I think we just, I got it from the board here that the twenty eighth is, is an option. So if they, you know, if they have an, an issue with the thirtieth, then we can go to the twenty eighth. And Thursday, the fifth is great.
Um, Thursday, the fifth, we may have to find a, a different spot, cause the Warner Pond Task Force. Um, but they may be done by seven, but, so you may, we may have to find a different spot for Thursday, December fifth, then Kai's Road.
What's the meeting, uh, Elizabeth, what's the meeting on November fourteenth?
Uh, November fourteenth is your regular monthly meeting.
Okay, okay.
That you have to be at because I won't be and we need a quorum.
And that, that meeting was the one requested to be in person?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we can talk about that.
Okay, great.
Is there a normal meeting in October?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Your normal meeting in October is on the October tenth.
Yes, okay, good.
Good.
And that definitely is a, is a Zoom meeting.
Good.
And are you prepared to take up the, uh, memo on the, uh, October tenth about open, about the open meeting issues?
Uh, well, well, yeah, we, we need, we need to come up with a, with, with something where we wanna go.
Yeah, good.
Um, and I just, I just didn't wanna tonight discuss it. That is sort of like, you know, at least I, I want to give you guys a heads up that we're gonna discuss.
Yeah, good.
Not surprise you with this. Um, so, and, and especially since there's no urgency, right? There's, uh, we, we can, we can punt on this a little bit or, or at least think about it, mull it over a bit better.
Good.
So nine oh nine, just over two hours. Think we did well, we got all, all items approved. That was, uh, that was pretty. I asked, uh, him beforehand, like how many items are there on, uh, in October? And so I was already, I was ready to say the next, uh, it was gonna be seven twenty, but there was no seven twenty. In October.
Everyone.
Hmm?
Thank you.